Good morning, everyone. We will call the county commissioner to report the session to order for Tuesday, April 29, 2014. Thank you all for coming and we will run down through our regular business before we get to business with guests. I need to announce that the board met an executive session on Monday, April 28, 2014, at 9:30 a.m. to discuss personnel matters. Under public session, we will post unapproval of our December 31, 2013 work session minutes, April 15, 2014 work session minutes, and April 22, 2014 work session minutes. Our first item then is, I don't see Jim Lockwood, so I see Jen Koppel here. Oh, Jim Lockwood or Jen Koppel, Deputy Director of Behavioral Health and Public Services. These are agreements and we'll take action on these tomorrow.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Jen.
We have two contracts for approval for tomorrow. The first one is Blenker, Byler, and Thomas. They are a legal firm here in town. It's a contract that we've had for a number of years.
So this money is, this isn't increasing your budget, it's in your system, your utilization, you're able to shift monies around to meet the needs of your individual clients. Okay, is this block grant or is this base funding?
This is all block grant?
This is all block grant.
And it's, it's within budget?
I notice this is a new agreement, Jen. Have we used a new staffing service or is this something unique because of the circumstances that we're dealing with?
This is unique because of the circumstances of this gentleman basis.
But we have, what have we used them for in the past? Because normally we have annual contracts with both.
Right.
This is not, this is a new contract today?
It is, it's a new block grant contract. We use them on the vapor side for individuals. So it's just that because of the funding.
It's new because of the block grant funding source?
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll see you or Jen tomorrow or both on duty for action on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. Next up, Dave Rosina and crew.
And crew, yes. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
We have two, our two items for action this morning and one for action tomorrow. This morning's actions were requesting your approval of an amendment to our home consortium agreement. This is an agreement between the city and the county of Lancaster under the Home Investment Partnerships Program. It allows both jurisdictions to combine, jurisdiction to combine their funds so that funds can be expended in the city or the county depending where the grade is needed. When the consortium was set up originally, there were no provisions to have automatic renewal clauses. That has since changed our regulations. They now allow you to have an automatic renewal clause which saves a lot of work every three years when you renew the consortium.
And you said you're looking for action on this one today?
Yes, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to agree for the County of Lancaster Act on behalf of the Lancaster County Redevelopment Authority to approve the following. An agreement with the Redevelopment Authority of Lancaster County in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. Purpose, the Redevelopment Authority of Lancaster County will administer the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development known as HUD grant programs in conformance with applicable program regulations for the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and all other applicable local, state, and federal laws, rules, and regulations. The term is effective April 29, 2014, to the end of the HUD grant year.
Mr. Chairman, I think he was asking for action on resolution number 29.
We talked about 30. Yeah, we, that's what the ones you were asking for action on, the day 29.
So we're not doing action on both?
We are.
Okay.
We had, we had talked about 30.
On our, on our system, we had the other one.
Then they're back, they're back to now.
They're different orders.
Okay. All right, well this. Well, let me make a second and then you.
Okay, right.
Go ahead. I will second that motion.
Okay. Resolution number 30 was an agreement between the County of Lancaster and the Lancaster County Redevelopment Authority to administer the three HUD grant programs, the Emergency Shelter Grant Program, now known as Emergency Solutions Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is an agreement that we execute each year between the city, private county, and the redevelopment authority to administer the program.
You said resolution 30.
That was 30.
This is just a motion.
This is just a motion.
Okay. And then the consortium is resolution number 29.
Okay. Are we doing 30 today?
Yes.
We have a.
What they're presenting right now is just a motion.
Just a motion.
It's not, it's not a resolution, it's a motion.
I think we're out of order here in terms of.
There is no resolution 30.
Right.
It's just the motion for this item and then the resolution 29 is next.
Which one are we doing? 29?
No, right now we're doing the motion.
We're doing the motion.
Okay, we're doing the motion.
We're doing the agreement.
So this is the one, this is the one that relates to Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Solutions Program. This is just our agreement with the Redevelopment Authority, if I understand this correctly, to manage those programs for the county. That's what this motion is simply doing, if I understand correctly.
Got it?
Yep. Let's do it.
Any other questions or comments? We'll call for a question on the motion, the agreement with the county and the Redevelopment Authority of Lancaster County. Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The third item for action tomorrow will be.
Now we're going to do, we're going to do resolution 29.
Oh, consortium, okay. The consortium agreement, this is an agreement between the County of Lancaster and the City of Lancaster to use home investment partnership program funds in either jurisdiction. At one time, the city and the county were both separate entitlement communities. We've since joined those communities together so we can spend funds in both jurisdictions. We're adding a clause to allow us to have an automatic renewal of the consortium rather than every three years starting from scratch. HUD now allows us to automatically renew with the units as, so it streamlines the process.
We started this practice, how many years ago?
This would be our third round that we've had consortium, so this would be nine years. Our last, we've done six years so far.
And in essence, we're not, most of the funds would be flowing from the county to the city, not vice versa.
Right, right. But actually, at this point, very little has, from the county has flowed into the city. There's been, I think, one project where we both supported the project, that was our rental housing project.
Fund getting tighter, sequestration, whatever it might be. However, typically we see, I'll call clawback, but if there's excess funds, a project comes in under budget, we'd be able to use those funds to lead a project from the city if necessary.
That's correct.
You need a motion for this one? I'll do the motion first if I could, please. Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of resolution number 29 of 2014. This is an amendment to a, the home consortium agreement between Lancaster County and the City of Lancaster. I'll send it.
Any other additional comments? I think you, we're not, we're not ready yet. I recall the, you're administering the funds on behalf of both entities, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that makes it more efficient?
It's more efficient that way. That's correct. The city still administers, a few of the smaller programs have a home repair program that they use their staff to administer, but all the funding is our responsibility.
Okay. Just want to comment, this really is an efficiency for both the county and the city, which allows us the option of, if we have county funds, there's, there's, there's not, there is not a need for county funds. Those funds can be redirected to a city need so we can fully maximize the utilization of these funds.
That is correct, and that's very important because there are very strict timelines for HUD on the use of these funds.
And the piece that we're approving today or considering approval today is simply the automatic renewal piece, so we don't have to come back every three years, as we stated earlier, to re-approve the consortium agreement with the city.
Correct.
And there's no other changes here to the consortium agreement today other than the renew, the automatic renewal piece.
That's correct.
Thank you. And nothing will prohibit a future board from changing course if necessary.
Either party can withdraw from the consortium. Yes.
All right, ready to vote? Call for a question on resolution number 29 of 2014. Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it. Okay, and now resolution number 30, and you're asking for tomorrow action on this part.
Yes, this will be the annual submission of the annual action plan to HUD for the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Justin Evi, our program manager for community development, will be good review of what's included in the action plans for this year.
Morning.
Good morning, Justin.
In front of you is a front back summary of the action plan. This plan serves as the formal application of the HUD for entitlement funds in the county. These are final numbers. We expect to expend $6 million in new entitlement funds for CDG, home ESG. This also includes program income and reprogrammed funds from the past fiscal year. On the backside, wanted to point out that about 64% of the funds are going to housing programs throughout the county, and as Dave mentioned also, the city through the consortium. These programs include construction new units, existing units, rehab of these units, accessibility improvements, home buyer assistance. We also have listed the projects that are recommended for funding for 2014. These projects have gone through the citizen participation process, both the homeless and public services, and the public facilities. These committees are made up of citizen representatives throughout the county, and also for the public facilities and infrastructure, also includes municipal representatives. If you have any questions about the projects, happy to answer any questions.
I'll have to review, I'll review your project list and tomorrow I may have some questions regarding specific projects. Just in terms of overall funding, what does this, how does this year's action plan, proposed action plan compare to the 2013?
The numbers are generally the same.
So there was, there's no significant reductions that you're?
No. They were within a couple percent.
And what were the comments that you received during the public process this year?
We had two comments at a public meeting that we held on April 16. The one comment was, for the one committee, the public services committee, they felt that the people that served on the committee was a good group of individuals, they asked really tough questions, and they were happy with the process. The other comment was that they felt the Redevelopment Authority administered, set forth a plan with the limited resources, they were happy with the plan.
Those were the only public comments you said.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. We'll see you tomorrow for action for resolution number 30. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
See you tomorrow.
Tell Matthew we missed him. I'll tell him tomorrow. Thanks, Dave.
Next up, we have facility, Charlie Datz and Barry Garlin, and we'll take action on this tomorrow. What do you have for us today?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
What we have is the selection of an engineering firm to move fire alarm system at the county prison. The current system is outdated, it's been problematic the past few years with false alarms and failures, as well as it's becoming obsolete trying to find parts and to repair and maintain the system. What we're proposing is to do the engineering and design work this year and bid it as a package for construction in 2015. We recommend this be a bond funded project. Rough estimate right now is approximately $1.2 million, if you're plural, the entire package. But with that, Barry Garlin is going to highlight the proposal that we have from the engineering firm.
The proposal is for the design of the system and preparing the bid document for bidding. The design would start as soon as we get done the contract. The anticipated bid date is sometime in September with an award following, and start construction that will be in January for better than next year.
How long would it take?
It'll probably take about nine months to 10 months to complete the project once it's started. I imagine obviously it's going to be throughout the building in terms of destruction of operations at the prison, but that'd be pretty minimal in order to reestablish a new system in there and remove the old.
Right. We will need to maintain the existing system and then do the changeover to the new one. We'll be working with the, with the staff and try to minimize the impact.
Is there a question? This is just for the engineering piece. After we have the project bid, we'll have project piece coming for us at later date. That's the rest.
See you both tomorrow. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on then to other discussion items. We have some appointments are reported to county boards.
We're going to put off library till next week. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we appoint the Lancaster County Transportation Authority for a five-year term through the first Monday in January 2019, Christopher Eric Metzler. He's a Lancaster County resident.
Second motion.
Other questions, discussions?
He's filling, he's replacing Matt Brown on the transportation.
Very nothing, call for a question on the move, Chris Metzler, who is the transportation authority. Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have others? That's it? That's it? I have some updates on dates and time. Tomorrow's agenda?
There's nothing additional for tomorrow's agenda.
Okay. All right. Now, for the reason most of you are here, pretty much all of you are here, we do have with us this morning, Williams Partners to make a presentation, both naturally have pipeline in southern Lancaster County. Given time or thought we would have some opening remarks from commissioners, Commissioner Mark, turn it over to you.
I appreciate the turnout, everybody here today to find out, I think we're all here to find out more information. I think the goal of this today is to come away with this with a better understanding of the process, how this is going to work, who schedules public meetings, when notifications occur, and to ask some general questions about how this all works and why. The board doesn't necessarily have a role to play officially and as a decision maker. However, I think it's important being that this is Lancaster County that we advocate for what we think is important here in our community and get the answers that our citizens are looking for, and I imagine this is going to be a first in the line of a lot of public meetings over the next couple of months with our citizens, especially in those impacted areas and attachments. So, welcome, thank you, and don't forget to silence yourself if.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do you have a microphone if we could all hear back here?
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to thank you all for attending. Really appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedules to be with us here this morning on this very important Lancaster County matter. I want to make some, some brief comments before the Sergeant Williams presentation just to give you, everyone a sense of, of how I see the challenges that we are likely to face going forward. From my perspective, I think one, a couple of things are clear. First of all, if FERC does approve the pipeline, I think everyone is in agreement that it will leave a lasting, a lasting scar on Lancaster County in some form or another. I think it's also, I wasn't looking for applause, but thank you. And I also think it's also true that, that there will not be any ongoing economic benefit to Lancaster County as a whole if FERC does approve the project. With that said, many of you are here because you have concerns about the root of the pipeline. Many of you, probably the River Hills area specifically, and I wanted to say that I share those concerns as well and certainly do not support the pipeline going through that area in Lancaster County. However, having said that, I think we all need to be mindful that, and I wouldn't be surprised if Williams makes some concession in that area, but that means the pipeline will move to other areas of Lancaster County which will also have impacts. And the reason I raise that is because wherever the impacts of this pipeline occur, we all have a collective interest in making sure that those impacts are eliminated or mitigated to the greatest possible extent. It's not just about the River Hills, it's also about river and stream crossings, it's also about farming. I was having a conversation with some farmers recently and they were telling me that they are concerned about trench restoration and whether or not, what the policy is for trench restoration, making sure that it's done properly so when those trenches are backfilled, the topsoil is on top and farmers can continue to use those lands in a productive manner. They're also concerned about above ground facilities. I know the article in the newspaper on Sunday said there would be no compressors contemplated in Lancaster County, but if there are other above ground facilities, that could have a big impact on agriculture. You certainly don't want an above ground facility in the middle of a, of a field. I've also heard some concerns about the impact on public water systems, particularly in the Mountjoy and Litchfield Town area, and the fact that where the pipeline is routed could have an impact on their wellhead, which obviously is a big concern, folks have lived in that area. Plus, there's also public safety issues, residential issues, and a whole other range of issues that we may not even know about yet that could prop up. So what I'm really suggesting is that while much of the focus recently has been on the River Hills area, we need to be mindful that there's other impacts and they affect all of us, and we need to be one community and one voice in making sure that those impacts are addressed properly if, if, if FERC does finally approve a pipeline here in Lancaster County. So I wanted to say that because if Williams does make a concession on the River Hills area, I, I wanted to make sure that at least from my perspective, there are other impacts that are just as important, and we need to speak as one community and be one voice. So, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for the opportunity.
Just let me echo my thanks to all of you for coming today. I know it's a very important issue, and I'd also like to thank the emails and letters in. Emails and letters in, we do appreciate your concern, we appreciate hearing from you. With that, I'll turn it over to Andrew LaCue with a few of the ground rules for the rest of the meeting here.
I don't have a mic, so I'm going to stand up. Hopefully everybody, can everyone hear me? Just a couple of things this morning in an effort to make sure that everyone who would like to speak this morning, so that we have the opportunity to accommodate everyone that would like to speak, I'm going to ask the following. If you are here as part of a group, we'd ask that you designate a speaker to speak on your behalf, just so that everyone else that would like to speak, that we have time for everyone to be able to speak. Everyone will have, each person speaking will have a three-minute time limit. I will be keeping track of that time. When time is up, I will let you know when your time is up. If you do have multiple questions, please ask those questions or make comments within your time period. We don't want to have to pause the timer, get a response, turn the timer back on, and for that three minutes. So please use that time to ask all of your questions or make your comments. We are going to be doing one round of questioning, so if there is, if there is time, the commissioners will allow for a second round, so if you do have additional comments, please wait till that second round of, of questions if we do have time for that. The podium over here is where everyone would come to to ask their questions. Please state your name and your municipality or the organization that you are representing so that we can have that in the minutes. I think that's it then for this morning.
The presentation will happen.
Right, first what we're going to do is we're going to have Williams make their presentation. The commissioners will ask questions, comments. There will be some dialogue between Williams and the commissioners, and then at that point it'll be opened up for public questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thanks, Andrea.
We'll turn it over to Williams, and they've got quite a contingent here to ask questions. We'll ask them to come up and introduce themselves and make their presentation.
They're also concerned about above-ground facilities. I know the article in the newspaper on Sunday said there would be no compressors contemplated in Lancaster County. But if there are other above-ground facilities, that could have a big impact on agriculture. You certainly don't want an above-ground facility in the middle of a field. I've also heard some concerns about the impact on public water systems, particularly in the Mountjoy and Litchfield Town area, and the fact that where the pipeline is routed could have an impact on their wellhead, which obviously is a big concern for folks who've lived in that area. Plus, there's also public safety issues, residential issues, and a whole other range of issues that we may not even know about yet that could prop up. So what I'm really suggesting is that while much of the focus recently has been on the River Hills area, we need to be mindful that there's other impacts and they affect all of us. And we need to be one community and one voice in making sure that those impacts are addressed properly if FERC does finally approve a pipeline here in Lancaster County. So I wanted to say that because if Williams does make a concession on the River Hills area, I wanted to make sure that at least from my perspective, there are other impacts that are just as important and we need to speak as one community and be one voice. So, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for the opportunity.
Just let me echo my thanks to all of you for coming today. I know it's a very important issue, and I'd also like to thank the emails and letters in. Emails and letters in. We do appreciate your concern. We appreciate hearing from you. With that, I'll turn it over to Andrew LaCue with a few of the ground rules for the rest of the meeting here.
I don't have a mic, so I'm going to stand up. Hopefully, everybody, can everyone hear me? Just a couple of things this morning in an effort to make sure that everyone who would like to speak this morning, so that we have the opportunity to accommodate everyone that would like to speak, going to ask the following. If you are here as part of a group, we'd ask that you designate a speaker to speak on your behalf, just so that everyone else that would like to speak, that we have time for everyone to be able to speak. Everyone will have, each person speaking will have a three-minute time limit. I will be keeping track of that time. When time is up, I will let you know when your time is up. If you do have multiple questions, please ask those questions or make comments within your time period. We don't want to have to pause the timer, get a response, turn the timer back on, and for that three minutes. So please use that time to ask all of your questions or make your comments. We are going to be doing one round of questioning, so if there is time, the commissioners will allow for a second round. So if you do have additional comments, please wait till that second round of questions if we do have time for that. The podium over here is where everyone would come to to ask their questions. Please state your name and your municipality or the organization that you are representing so that we can have that in the minutes. I think that's it then for this morning.
The presentation will happen.
Right. First, what we're going to do is we're going to have Williams make their presentation. The commissioners will ask questions, comments. There will be some dialogue between Williams and the commissioners, and then at that point it'll be opened up for public questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea. I'm Andrea. We'll turn it over to Williams, and they've got quite a contingent here to ask questions. So we'll ask them to come up and introduce themselves and make their presentation.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you for being here.
All right. Now, Andrea, you said you had to turn on the mics?
Yes, turn the mics on. You probably want to pull them pretty close to you if you're going to be speaking. The light, the blue lights should come on once you turn the mics on.
Great. Can everyone hear me?
Okay.
Great. Well, good morning, and thanking you. Thank you for allowing us to come and brief the county about our Atlantic Sunrise project. My name is Cindy Ivey. I am the manager of public outreach for the project. With me at the table, I have several people. I'll introduce them. We also have other people in the room, other subject matter experts that will turn to if we need to. But at the table with me, I have Mariette DuCoco. He is the director of operations for our facilities in this particular area. Next to me is Perry, our project managers. Next to him is Roberta Swire. She is the manager of permits and natural resources for the company. Next to her is Chris Springer. He is the project director for the project. And next to him is Don Fernal, who is the manager of environmental services with another area of our company. This morning's briefing will include information about our company. You have some folders in front of you. We'll go through some of that information. An overview of the project, as well as the regulatory process that projects like this go through. We'll go over where we are in that process and the regulatory and the anticipated timelines for the regulatory review of our project. We'll tell you what steps we've already taken, what the anticip system. It is the blue line that goes up the eastern seaboard. When Transco was originally built in the late 40s and early 50s, it was designed to carry gas from the Gulf of Mexico to Manhattan. That's where it ended. And it was 1,500 miles of one pipeline at that time. Since then, the Transco Pipeline System has over 10,000 miles of pipeline, and it's very similar to what you would see like lanes on a highway. So as capacity increased and as the need increased, we added more lanes, and you'll see that when we go into the more detailed maps. But it still carried gas from the Gulf of Mexico to Manhattan. Over time, we've added additional drop-off points and different kinds of things along the different delivery points along the eastern seaboard. And with this particular project, even though traditionally it has flowed from south to north, this particular project is designed to turn Transco's system around to bring production in Pennsylvania from both sort of the, a little bit western, a little bit eastern, into Transco's system to be able to flow southward. So the purpose and need for this particular project that we're going to talk about today is to connect production from Pennsylvania to Transco's system and allow customers along the entire eastern seaboard to have access to lower-priced natural gas from the Marcellus region. So if we go a little bit deeper into your folders, the next map is a project overview map. The Atlantic Sunrise Project is quite large geographically. It is both a greenfield project and it's also an expansion of Transco's existing system. So if you look over here in Clinton and Lycoming Counties, the gray lines are Transco's existing system in Pennsylvania. If you look toward Lycoming and Clinton, you'll see those two little blue lines. Those are loops or pipeline laid parallel to what we already have in that particular area, and that's to add capacity from those producing areas out in those counties. The greenfield portion of the project starts in Susquehanna County. It goes south and goes toward our, so this particular system right here along the top, along Pennsylvania is called our Lighty System. It's designed to be bidirectional and takes gas to and from storage out here and back into our main line. So the part that's on the blue line is greenfield until it hits the top of what we call the Lighty Diamond. That would be looping, and then it would go south through those counties and hit our main line in Lancaster County close to our Station 195. The project is designed to carry 1.7 BCF of gas. And just to give you some numbers to kind of help you understand both the size of Transco and the size of this particular project. Transco transports between 9% and 10% of the natural gas consumed in the United States. We do not own the gas that's in the pipeline. We're like a trucking company. So Transco gets paid to haul molecules of gas from point A to point B, and people, the customers pay us a rate to do that. This particular project would carry 1.7 BCF. So if you think about that, that's, Transco on a daily basis carries between probably eight and nine BCF a day. So this one project would increase Transco's capacity by about 20%. That's a lot. It's the largest expansion project Transco has ever undertaken. And the reason is, is because everybody wants access to the really low-priced Marcellus gas. And to give you a little bit of just historical from this past winter, it was a very, very rough winter for everyone. So in New England, if you were trying to buy gas in New England, because New England does not have a lot of infrastructure to carry Marcellus gas to that particular region, you might have paid $100 per MCF. If you had access to the Marcellus gas, customers would have paid $4. So you can imagine that our customers are really interested in getting this gas. The purpose and need for the project, very similar to what we're doing today. So if you look at the filter list based on who we've met with, and we have entered what's called the pre-filing process. We entered FERC's pre-filing process on April 4th, and we've been given a docket number of PF14-8. And that should have been on the, some of the letters that we've sent, and certainly on the landowner letters and on the stakeholder letters that were recently mailed out. But I can certainly remind you of that and tell you how, as a county, you can participate in the process as far as being part of that docket. As far as the timeline goes, the top half of this again is really where we meet with the public, public input opportunities, those kinds of things. So this top half of the process takes about a year. So when you think we've only entered the pre-filing process on April 4th, and this part of the process before we even submit a formal application, takes about a year. So we are very, very, very early in the process. This is the time to gather, this is a data gathering time, and this is the time to really talk about the issues that you raised and work through those particular issues. We will have open houses. The company will sponsor, to your point about public meetings, the company will sponsor open houses. We think the open house for this particular area will be the week of June 9th. But we'll hold public meetings in all 10 counties that are affected by the project. After that, FERC will attend those particular meetings. They will have representatives that attend. And based on those particular meetings, they will decide how many and where their scoping meetings will begin. Anytime you have a greenfield part of a project like this where we have no existing facilities in an area, for Lancaster County, we do have, like I said, three lines in the southern part of the county, but where we're proposing to add this additional pipeline, we don't have any facilities. So we have to start from scratch. We don't have, we have not put any boots on the ground. Certainly, as far as survey goes, what we've done is start with a study corridor. So we don't really start with a set route. Our routing engineers start with basically what they feel like is from a Google desktop, that's how they start. We fly the route so we get some aerial photography, and we look on our desktops and we start to start thinking, we know we need to get from point A to point B, and how would we go about doing that? We take into consideration topography, construction methodologies that we think would be able to be used, environmental impacts, populated areas, and we just start looking at what we feel like might be a good route to go through that minimizes the impact on the public and also minimizes environmental impacts, but is constructable and safe. We have to go, we have to also look at, once something goes into operation, what do we need to do to make sure that we can maintain those operations over the long term? So that's what goes through the minds again in the beginning. So we start with a pretty wide swath that we're looking at. It's about 600 feet, and that's to allow us to a little bit of wiggle room. So once we start talking to folks and we start hearing the issues, then we start looking, is there, are there ways to be flexible basically in this initial look at what we think might be a good route? And that's the data gathering process that we're in right now. So we send letters. We certainly do presentations like this in advance of that if we can. I know we've had phone conversations back and forth between, this was our first chance to really come and speak to you like this, but certainly we've had phone conversations back and forth. There are 44 townships. We've either had meetings or phone calls with each of those townships along the project route, and we've had a lot of meetings so far. It takes a while to get to every township and every person to meet with those individual communities, but we try to do our best with that before any letters go out to landowners. Once the letters go out to landowners, especially in the areas that we do not have any facilities, we basically ask for permission to survey their property. And we add, and more about the alternatives that we're trying to look at. Again, without doing any surveys, without having any, really any engineers or survey crews out there, it is really just a desktop review of what we think our preferred route might be and what we think as we've started talking to folks and working through issues, what some alternatives might be. It is not a complete document. It's really just a draft to try to get the public informed about what the company is thinking about. So that's the steps we have taken so far and where we are in the process. I think probably most everyone in the room wants to have a better look at both Tuck One Glen and Shakespeare. So if everyone's okay, we'll kind of, I have some larger maps. I'll put one up on the easel. If it's all right, I'll use one of the microphones maybe and, or maybe I'll have someone point. It may be a little bit easier to use the microphone and have someone point to, let's do Tuck One Glen first. You also have these maps in your folders, commissioners, so that you, we did this so that you kind of have a better look for the public, but you also have those 11x17 maps in your folders.
Okay.
I know it's going to be difficult for everyone to see, but we'll leave these, depending on how you want to run the meeting, we can leave this up for people to come and look after if necessary. What this map depicts is a really, really good illustration of a thought process of a company like ours when they look at both FERC guidance and environmental impacts in a particular area. And on this map, so that just to orient you a little bit, the pink is the outline of Tuck One Glen, the properties that are part of Tuck One Glen.
Can you put it up any higher? We can't see that here.
That's probably the best that we can outside.
Okay. Okay. Again, to orient you to the map, the pink outline are the parcels that are part of Tuck One Glen. The yellow lines represent into this particular area, trying to stay close to the utility corridors, but understanding we were in a sensitive area. If you look, Mark, if you can point to the trailer park, right there.
Campground.
It's a campground. Okay. So that is an example right there. When we look on a desktop, we see that it's an area of congregation. We do not know because we do not have permission to go onto that particular piece of property. We don't know if it's a campground for Tuck One Glen or whether these are permanent residents or people living close to the Glen. Because you can't tell any of that. You can tell that it's a trailer park, but you cannot tell the use of it from.
All right. Come on, folks. You can't be yelling out at this meeting. You're frustrated and you want to make comments later, please do, but we at least owe the Williams folks their respect to them make the presentations. And if they made mistakes, you can correct them later, but please don't yell out. It's going to be awfully unseemly if we allow it to continue to go throughout today. So please try to just hold off until you have the opportunity to make comments later, people, please.
So our first look at this particular area is always to, one, stay adjacent to existing utility corridors, but to try to avoid areas of congregation or populated areas. That's why the green route sort of moves away from the campground and into the Glen and to the right-of-way for PP&L's right-of-way there. The light blue line would be what the company, and again, these are not exact lines. These are just sort of what the company and how they would sort of, if we were going to move to the utility corridor quicker and use it for the entire section of Tuck One Glen, you would be impacting that campground because the utility corridor goes right through it. The blue line is basically, again, it's not, it's not an exact route. These are just depictions would be going around Tuck One Glen. And again, you can't see it because it's really hard to see sort of the whole area, but also point out. There are many more parcels, many more landowners that would be impacted by going around. There are homes in that area and quite a few more parcels of land. So that basically is sort of how a company looks at an alternatives analysis. So when we do our environmental documents, we would tabulate the environmental impacts for staying close to a utility corridor if we had to touch any part of the Glen, and then the acreage and environmental impacts to go around a sensitive area such as the Glen. So those would all be part of our resource reports, the acreage and impacts associated with each of those alternatives would be tabulated and part of the documents that we would submit. And that's the kind of way that we will deal with alternatives analysis and the way in which, this is really just a great example of showing what trading impacts really means. So if you can't stay close to a utility corridor and you are in an environmentally sensitive area, what does that mean to the other landowners? And it goes directly to your point that you made in the beginning, that if you move away, then you are going to be impacting other people. So what is the balance to be had there? And that's what an alternatives analysis is all about. So I'm going to stop there. I know I want to be sensitive to our time, and I want to allow enough time for comment. So I wanted you to ask us your questions first, and like I said, we have a lot of people in the room. If I can't answer your question, we have some others in here that can.
Thank you, Cindy. Turn it over to Commissioner Martin.
Mr. Chairman, I think first to let everybody know, I know people have problems seeing that, we're going to investigate these all scanned, and we'll get them on the county's website outlining the timeframe that was talked about and the various maps that were provided to us. We'll get a file online so people can pull them up and hold. I do have a series of questions, and thank you for the presentation. Just first for a general understanding, what's the difference between, there's different types of pipeline? You have transmission lines, gathering lines, I think distribution lines. What are the difference between the three?
So the project that we're talking about today is a transmission line. It is an interstate pipeline that crosses states. A gathering line is basically what is used to gather gas from the wellhead and take it to a processing plant, strip out any liquids and those kinds of things before it can be pipeline quality gas to go into an interstate natural gas pipeline system. A distribution system, and I think in the way that you're asking, would be similar to UGI in this particular area. They're your local distribution company, and those are, so Transco is business to business, not business to consumer. Your distribution lines are business to consumer, and your gathering lines are bringing the gas from the producing areas to processing and then getting ready for pipeline quality gas.
Okay. I guess a general question. Why Lancaster County? I mean, if there's answers like crossing the Susquehanna North or whatnot, obviously you see the route of the pipeline and how far north it goes to, I believe, Susquehanna County. Why do you need to put the pipeline through Lancaster County? And could it be put anywhere else?
Well, we do a lot of hydraulic modeling before we start any of this. So we know the amount of gas that we need to move, and we know generally speaking where we need it to come from and where we need it to go to. There is a, hydraulically, Lancaster County, because we already have three main lines in the southern part of the county, is the prime place for the gas to enter the Transco system for the southward flow, which would be the path for this particular project. So yes, there are. So, yes, there are, there's wiggle room to move, but hydraulically speaking, there's not like another county or moving way away, that would not be possible for this particular project. But certainly within the county, I mean, that's what this process is all about, is hearing your concerns, is there a better way to route it? But we do try, need to try to get to Transco's main lines in the southern part of Lancaster.
The, one thing that I've heard probably more than anything, I mean, of course, I've heard from folks that don't want the pipeline at all, probably the number one thing I heard that people have been most consistent about, and taking into consideration my colleagues' comments earlier about, you know, hanging out to the public what that looked like, and to be fair to the folks who potentially could be impacted, so at least the community can see that.
Yes, we met with the Conservancy this morning, and we laid out that exact scenario. So, we showed them the maps, and we agreed to work together, we're going to put a small working group together to look at, again, what would trading impacts look like? If you avoid this particular area and you impact another area, what does that look like? How does it look, there may be more forested areas that may be not part of the Conservancy, but may still be impacted. So, we need to look at those kinds of things. So, we've agreed to put a small working group together to go forward to do that more significant alternatives analysis, yes.
Okay. I'd like to talk a little bit about safety. Obviously, it's a concern of all our residents, and, you know, as elected officials are concerned about safety in general. What do you do to avoid accidents? What do you do to ensure the safety of our residents? Maybe talk about, what are the common types of safety issues that pipelines are up against? The, in addition to that, expand on that, we happen to be downwind of two nuclear power plants here. The company Exelon has been a partner with our first responders in helping to provide training and opportunities to really deal with pipelines. Can you address that from a safety issue?
Absolutely, and I'm going to turn to some colleagues for this. Mario Dukoko is who are Operations Director in this area. We do do annual training with our emergency responders, if I'm letting.
Goes into service, we put a CP system on the pipe, it's a cathodic detection system. And the purpose of that is, again, to, if there are any anomalies in coding, to keep this current flowing to the pipe and not off the pipe, so that any electrons would flow onto the pipe rather than metal flowing off the pipe. We check those readings every two months, test stations are basically about a mile apart. If we come up with a low reading on the pipeline, we do what's called a close interval survey. And the close interval survey will measure the current every foot of the pipeline, so we can see where the current dips down and if we have to go back in and do anything to decode it. We also run smart pigs every seven years. The smart pigs basically run from one point where we can put the pig in the pipeline to another point. It could be 10 miles, it could be up to 100 miles depending on the pipeline systems. We run the smart pig, the smart pig will give us information about this on a weekly basis also, depending on weather. We also are participants in Pennsylvania One Call. We have been participants since Pennsylvania One Call was established many years ago. We have people that sit on board of directors for the Pennsylvania One Call, so we're very involved with that. Any work we do, obviously, we put a One Call ticket in, and any other contractors working in the area will always put a One Call ticket. Send people out to investigate where that is, mark the pipeline, if there's work around the pipeline, we will have people there at all times to inspect the work, make sure it's done properly, and make sure the pipeline is protected. We do meetings with emergency management officials, with fire companies, we do them, we have many, many counties that we go through, so we don't hit every single county every year, but we try to hit as many counties as we possibly can. And we do have more public outreach people on our staff right now, so we probably can do more meetings as we go forward. So, we would be, we would work together with OEM and with fire companies to make sure that they understand what's out there and what they would need to do in case of emergency. We also have meetings with contractors, so that we can educate them on what our guidelines are for working on the pipeline. And again, we work very closely with contractors to go through any time of building anything around the pipeline.
What are the kind of issues that you face with, if there is a, should I say, a crack in the pipe? Is it, does the gas go airbound? Does it spread throughout soil? What are the repercussions of having quote-unquote "leak"? And what kind of impact does that have on surrounding areas? How far does it possibly go? Does it impact people's well water? I mean, these are the things that people are concerned about.
Everything in our pipeline is natural gas. So, natural gas is lighter than air, so if there was a breach in the pipeline, all that gas would float up into the atmosphere and dissipate. It won't travel in the ground unless there's a path, maybe along the pipeline where the ground has been disturbed, it might travel a little way before coming up to the surface, but typically, it'll come directly up to the surface and then go into the atmosphere. We do walk the line annually to check for leaks. Gas in our system here is partially odorized. We typically only odorize our gas at our Station 200 in Fraser, Pennsylvania, but because of the dynamics of bringing different gas into our system, we have a new interconnect and lower transfer that is bringing odorized gas into our system. So, part of the project, all the gas coming into this project and coming into the main line will be odorized. So, everything in Lancaster County will then become odorized gas when this project is completed, 100% odorized.
And how quickly would you know if there was a leak or not? Given how you did the electrical tests earlier, I think you said you do walkthroughs of the, how quickly can a breakdown somewhere be identified?
If it's a very minute leak, we would most likely pick it up on a routine patrol, either air patrol that would notice maybe the ground is a little drier in that area, or other vegetation may be dead, so they would call that in and we would check it out. So, typically, on a weekly basis, when we fly in the line, we would pick up things like that.
You do fly the line?
We do fly the line every week, but weather permitting.
So, could, I go back to my, could a crack in some place cause wells to be polluted? Waterways or wells to be polluted?
No, not in my opinion, except gas is lighter than air, when we move up through the ground, it's under, it's under pressure, the pressure would push it up through the ground, it would come into the atmosphere.
Okay. Who regulates or has oversight of the pipelines once they're in service? Besides the company doing checks, who's inspecting to make sure that everything's in compliance?
Our central regulator is the USDOT, former transportation, and it's the Pipeline Hazards and Terrible Safety Administration that has direct regulation over us. And they do order us, usually every one of our facilities is ordered every other year.
Lancaster County's kind of in the crosshairs of Chesapeake Bay cleanup and controlling the runoff that goes into our street, into our streams and our rivers into the Susquehanna River and obviously down south. What do you guys do to mitigate that kind of runoff when you have that type of amount of earth that is disturbed?
We will put best management practices into place using soil erosion and sediment control plans that we will have reviewed through the Chapter 1 of 2 process. So, it could be a variety of things, it really just depends on the site-specific conditions, but some of the typical measures that we use are silt fence, hay bale, compost filter stocks, things like that, set up in a way that would prevent the runoff from entering the waterways.
I see most, or most, in just the research I'm able to find, where I do see citations given for some sort of violations, typically in that area of construction and water runoff. So, I imagine that's something that's, it's very important to our community.
Yeah.
As we're trying to reduce what we're putting into the bay, that we do everything we can.
Absolutely.
How wide is the easement and the construction corridor throughout the term of the construction? And what do you guys do to restore what you can to the environment that you obviously have disturbed in order to put this in?
The easement, when it's all said and done, would be 50 feet, and that is, the easement is, or the easement agreements are to construct, operate, and maintain one pipeline. So, that's the way the easement agreements are written, and it's for a 50-foot permanent right-of-way. The construction corridor can vary. In agricultural areas, we do a little bit wider construction corridor between 100 and 125 feet, and that's to allow topsoil segregation, and the spoil is, you know, put right beside the ditch, so we take the topsoil off, segregate it from the other soil, and that's on, those are kept apart. And you need more room, basically, therefore, topsoil segregation. In environmentally sensitive areas, certainly there's some guidance having to do with that. We can try to neck down as much as, you know, let's say we were doing a stream crossing, again, we would probably work with FERC and PDEP at that point in time to work through what that particular construction corridor would be there, but we do have some flexibility for very short stretches to keep the construction corridor as minimal as possible as we go through. But typically, if you're just doing a typical construction corridor, again, anywhere from probably 90 to 110, 125 feet.
Okay. I'm just curious, when you do, when there's stream crossings, I honestly don't know the answer to this, is it, you go underneath, do you let it get rid of?
It can be either way. There can, there's a variety of construction methodologies, maybe Robert, you might want to go through a few of those. Sometimes we can do a horizontal directional drill, sometimes we do more of an open cut, some of it's a dry stream crossing. So, it really depends on the environmentally sensitive area, and what construction methodologies do we think and is FERC and PDEP and all the regulating agencies feel would be the most or least impactful. As far as restoration goes, I didn't get to that part of your question, we do restore, so the 50-foot right-of-way would be kept free, so as Mario described, if we couldn't fly it, or walk it, or those kinds of things, if we didn't keep that strip basically clear, so that, we do keep that strip clear, but on the additional temporary workspace that's used for construction, we do restore that back to what it, now, again, if we take down a tree, we're not going to put, you know, a big tree back, but we would restore those particular trees in that area, but they would be smaller. In the, in the construction corridor, not over the pipeline.
Okay. You had mentioned agriculture. I get mixed feedback from the ag community, some who don't mind, some who are opposed. How does that work, obviously, I think we're the number one ag producer in Pennsylvania? What, obviously, if you go through a farm, there's going to be disruption of farming practices and crops on that. What do you do, how do you work with farmers in terms of maybe the losses that they may experience, or how do you remediate? My understanding, just from general research, is that area can still be farmed?
Yes, you can farm over the right-of-way. We do bury the pipe a little bit deeper in agricultural areas to allow for deep tilling. We do work with the landowner, let's say he has drainage tiles or any of those kinds of things, we'll work to restore those. Typically speaking, let's say we went through the middle of a field, for that particular growing season, we would pay 100% of any crop loss during that time. For the second year, we would pay 50% of the crop loss there, and for the third year, we would pay 25%, and that's to allow the farmer to get back a full yield, and it usually takes about three years to get a full yield. And let's say the farmer could not use the back part of the property during the construction season, we would also, so they wouldn't be able to have crops there. Let's say if the, if the construction corridor went across the field and they could not farm the back half of that particular field, we would also pay for the crop loss there during that particular construction time period. And there are, we can sometimes build bridges, again, those are sort of individual landowner negotiations that we can try to work, it can't, we can't accommodate everything, but we might be able to do a bridge to allow some access to other parts of the property and those kinds of things during construction. But those are really things that we would work out one-on-one with each particular farmer or landowner.
This is a big question, I, I've heard a lot of discussion, I've actually heard contrasting info, conflicting information. The gas that is coming through this line and going through our county, is this gas that is solely not accessible to the residents of this county, or is this what's known as maybe an open access line that future economic development? I mean, I look at, right now, we, we can't really tap into Marcellus, we don't have the market, if I wanted to buy a CNG car, I probably could do it, but I got to drive down Route 1 and 202 to the closest CNG station to fill up. My question is, is once this line goes through, are Lancaster County residents ever able to have the economic benefit of natural gas from that line? Or is this just the means to move it through and send it everywhere else? You had mentioned earlier, for people to have lower gas prices. My, my question is, does Lancaster County fit into that equation? And that's pretty important, if you have a pipeline running through your county, and folks, if you're going to deal with the impacts, but yet you don't have any of the economic benefits?
That's a tough one. UGI is not, UGI is not a customer in this particular project, I know that's your local distribution here. We do have an interconnect or a meter station with UGI in Lancaster County. Some, a large portion of this particular, the customers on this particular project are producers, so they're basically pushing gas to the market. And again, we don't own the gas, so there would be contracts between the producers and likely UGI or any number of other customers that may use the gas. So, even though UGI is not a customer in the project and it is actually buying capacity, they could contract to buy the gas from a producer. That would be a commercial contract between those two folks, with Transco being the conduit by which those two contracts would come together. So, there's the possibility of it. The other thing that, even though it's hard to say as far as what actually serves the electric grid for Lancaster County, so Transco provides the gas for the connective plant in York County in Peach Bottom Township just across the way. We did a project about probably eight years ago where we did a lateral off our main line to feed that particular power plant. I am assuming because of its proximity to Lancaster County, that many people, when they turn on their lights, are turning on their lights and that electricity is being fueled by natural gas, but it's a really hard connection to make in the electric grid, whether the molecule of gas that goes through the Transco system is actually serving this particular grid for this area. Certainly, the potential is there, but for me to say that every molecule or those kinds of things would do that. So, potential is there, we are an open access pipeline. What that means is because we are federally regulated, we can't deny anyone from tapping into our line or taking, putting gas in or taking gas out. Now, it's not a simple process to do that, it's a very expensive process to do it, you have to make sure, like a UGI would have to make sure that they have the demand that they would need to be able to fund, basically, both the commercial side of that and also the infrastructure that it would take to do that. They're low pressure, a low-pressure distribution, this would be a high-pressure line, so you have to be able to have a meter station there to be able to cut the pressure and be able to do that. It's not an inexpensive proposition to do.
But it, so access is, that's what I was getting at, is access possible? You're saying, no, the infrastructure isn't here yet, that could happen, I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes, and there are other economic benefits. Certainly, Pennsylvania does not have adware and taxes, so the pipeline itself is not taxed for property, but any above-ground facilities are taxed. We will be doing an economic impact study that we will share with the county, we're going to be contracting with Penn State to do that, and basically, we give them, you know, our estimates of miles of pipe, steel, labor, local goods and services that would be purchased here. So, when you talk about economic benefit, it goes beyond just the gas in the pipeline, it goes to what it's like to have a pipeline, be part of a particular community, both from construction and local goods and services procured, and then the long-term taxes paid. And we will share those results with the county on what the economic impact would be for this particular area.
So, you do contract with, you don't bring in folks from outside?
We do, so construction for a pipeline like this is a very specialized construction technique, so we do hire specialized contractors to actually do the construction, but there are many things that we try to procure locally. Hay for erosion control measures, gravel for access roads, some labor, we do, the contractors do bring some labor in for specialized, because the welders and those kinds of folks have to be very specialized, but we do try to hire locally as much as we can, and then certainly those goods and services procured, restaurants, hotels, any of those kinds of things that construction workers would use during, during the construction time.
My last three, Mr. Chairman. What kind of impact do pipelines have historically on property values? You're, that is a concern of any of our residents, and maybe tie that into, when you enter into an agreement with a landowner, what kind of compensation do landowners get in this? Because obviously, you're going to be dealing with that a lot throughout this whole process.
This is, people never like the answer to this question. We have, we have not done them as a, as an individual company, but we are part of INGA, the Interstate Natural Gas Association of America, and they have done studies on property values. And again, they're looking at pipelines, not just from our company, they're looking at the, there's 300,000 miles of natural gas pipeline in the United States, so they're looking. So they're looking at it from a much more national level. And they have found typically that having a pipeline on a piece of property does not reduce the value of the property, simply because it's really more of a real estate conversation versus, you know, picking one property over another and based only solely on the decision on whether a pipeline is on that property. Most people make their real estate decisions on, is the house the house that I want to buy? Is it at the price that I want to pay? And is that seller willing to sell it? Is it in a good school district? Is it where I want to be long-term? So the real estate decisions are much more broad than whether a pipeline is on a particular property. And nationally, we have found, and not we, but the studies have found, that there is no reduction in property values based solely on that particular item.
My last two, Mr. Chairman. What's the life cycle of the steel pipe? I know you mentioned earlier, the one running throughout the eastern seaboard has been in place since the forties or fifties. What, what is the life cycle of this pipe? How often does it need to be replaced?
Well, we do run smart pigs every seven years. So as long as we're checking the pipe, it could really last indefinitely. It is coated, it is protected with a cathodic protection system, and it is inspected on a routine basis. If we find an issue, like I said, we dig it up, reinvestigate it, and if it needs to be cut out, that section of pipe would be cut out. But on, on the whole, the pipeline itself could really last forever.
Now, when you say you have to cut out a section, is it, are you able to turn it off of, like, north and south of the certain areas and then?
We can isolate, along the pipelines are valve settings. Typically, depending on class location, the number of people that live around the pipeline, valve settings would be taken between twenty miles apart or within ten miles apart in different class locations. So we would have valve settings. We can turn the valve off on both ends. We would evacuate the gas from the pipeline, and then we would cut the pipe on, cut out the, any damage that we had, and then drop in a spool piece, a piece of pipe, weld it up, X-ray it, and then put it back to service.
When you've done this, is it, there's, is there a certain type of lightning strikes? I know sometimes they can impact lines underground. What, what is the number-one cause of disturbance to your pipes?
Third-party damage is typically what we see.
Like, being crushed or hit?
Well, if someone doesn't put a one call out, and they go out and maybe with tobacco start digging in a trench, they might hit the pipeline and put a gouge in the pipe. Maybe putting a fence up or a post hole bigger, they go down and hit the pipe.
Well, my last question, besides the pipeline, would you need to construct any other facilities in Lancaster County?
Maybe Mario and Chris can also, there would be valve settings in the, in the county. Where we would tie into the main line in the southern part of Lancaster County, you would have above-ground facilities there simply because of what Mario just talked about, smart pigs. They have to be launched and received. So there are above-ground facilities to launch that particular equipment. So that is an above-ground facility. There may be a regulator at that particular location as well. And then again, the valve settings, every, I don't know how many miles apart they would be here. Again, it depends on population, but those would be above-ground facilities. Not big, but still something above ground.
And how far, how far apart? Like, every so, how many miles or is it?
It's based on, yeah? It's based on class location.
Travis?
It's based on class location, population density, as we kind of define the route and we start to narrow down the location of this, we'll do a population density, we'll count the number of residences, the types of structures, whether they're, they're for public occupancy, will determine the, the, the number of individuals. DOT prescribes the valves based, based on a class one, two, three, or four location. So depending on the class location, will determine where those valves are. So can we say one or two or three valves? We in Lancaster County, we're not at that point in front of design yet. And this is my first opportunity to speak. And I did want to mention a little bit something earlier. Mario, we, you know, you covered our safety, or your safety questions pretty well. One thing we did not cover was the design part of what we, we put into safety. And what I wanted to talk about was this class location. While you may or may not be familiar with DOT, which is basically our design requirements, minimum design requirements before, to us, class one has the lowest safety factor involved. We've already determined that we're not going to use a class one for any pipeline in Lancaster County. We're going to put in a class two pipe, and we're going to test one and a half times. Mario, we've covered the fact that, that we're going to X-ray one hundred percent of all the wells. It's a, that's a covered design and a construction requirement. DOT will possibly work apart as you, X-ray ten percent of wells. So we're committed to a hundred percent of wells, we're going to over-design the pipe, we're going to over-test it. Those are some of the safety design aspects around looking at this.
And I just added one thing on the valves. There will be remote-controlled valves also. So we had an issue, so we got notified, something was wrong, we could have those valves closed.
Just to make sure I understand, you say smart pigs, is that something that goes through the pipe or goes above, above the ground, if any of these?
It, it goes through the pipeline.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a magnetic flux field, so it puts out a magnetic field around the pipeline, and on the pig itself are all these sensors. When the magnetic field goes out, it comes back to the sensors, and it reads every area of the pipeline, all the way around it. And it orients the pipeline on, on the, the reports that we get. So we can actually look at the pipe on a flat piece of paper and see three hundred and sixty degrees and see exactly where any anomaly would be. So we know, stationing-wise, where it is, and we know on the orientation of the pipe where it is. We can tell you, looking at the line, that we have an anomaly at the five o'clock position, mile pulse one point one.
And just to follow up, do you ever put blinders in when you find anomalies as opposed to replacing a lighter pipe?
No, we, we don't use liners in our pipeline. We cut out the pipe, we put a new piece of steel pipe in our pipeline.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding from your, your documentation, and by the way, thank you for your presentation, I do appreciate it. Come on. And Lancaster County is impacted by the southern piece of the Atlantic Sunrise Pipeline proposal. But I am assuming that the bottleneck is occurring up in the area of what's being, was referenced as Station 517 and Station 515. Is that reasonably correct?
Sort of. So when we say bottleneck, if you, if this map continued on and there was a piece right here, you would see New Jersey and you would see the other parts of Transco's mainline system here. So the bottleneck is basically that if we were going to add one point seven VCF to our existing infrastructure, there's really no way to do it that much. I mean, it's not physically totally impossible, but it would be certainly more impactful. And in some areas, because of New Jersey and some of those areas, the encroachments are so close to the pipeline now that there's physically no room to expand. So it would be more impactful and create more bottlenecks by trying to expand Transco's existing system rather than creating this bypass. So that's basically what that means by de-bottlenecking the areas. This is, it's a very constrained area and a lot of infrastructure there that, there's really no way to add additional capacity there.
When you say almost impossible?
Almost impossible. So, so if you were going to add one point seven VCF to Transco's existing, now, I don't have the exact figures on it because we haven't run that particular modeling, but it will be part of our alternatives analysis on what if we take to add to Transco's existing or do this particular greenfield portion of the pipeline. And that will be part of Resource Report Ten in the alternatives analysis.
Well, then, just a comment then, because you're confirming much of what I plan to say anyway, and since I'll be the first one to admit I'm not an expert on pipelines. But I did try to do a little homework before today's meeting. Based on what I see, and granted, I will concede the point that, given the supply and demand of natural gas, distribution is a need. But the question becomes, where does it make sense to provide for that distribution? I don't think that's an unreasonable comment either. When I look at some of the documentation that you provide, you know, some of the options that you look at, including replacing existing pipelines with larger pipelines, which boosts capacity, or, or next to existing pipelines with boost capacity. And when I look, and I know you're undergoing a leady line extension project as well, that I guess is supposed to be completed sometime the end of 2015. But when I look at the Transco system in general, and I see the leady line going into New Jersey, where you say, and then coming, coming southwest, to the point where the southern part of the Atlantic Sunrise Pipeline would connect, it seems to me, and part of it is because of what we've done here in Lancaster County. In Lancaster County, we've established what's called urban growth areas, which is where we would like to see development occur so we can maintain our county character, which is the reason why we've invested so much in things like farmland preservation and open space. I think there, one of the editorial, the op-ed pieces in the Sunday News pegged that amount at a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. I don't know if that's the exact number, but it certainly seems to be a reflection of the size of the investment that Lancaster County has, 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 has done. So when I see that there is another, and also the other thing I'll add is that, if you talk about where we are with transportation projects here in Lancaster County, and the county has taken the lead on, on some of this, is that we've decided that capacity-adding projects from a transportation perspective are probably unlikely, given the resources that we have. Which means that we have the obligation to make our existing infrastructure system work as efficiently as possible. One of the things that the county is working on now is trying to make sure that some of our congested quarters work more efficiently through a signalization project. And it seems to me, when you're asking for, you know, asking for approval from FERC to do a greenfield project, it seems to me that if you have bottleneck issues, which, granted are business concerns, there is, and I don't want to minimize them in any way, shape, or form, but when you see that your existing system has connection to that point, just doesn't have the capacity to get the gas to that point, seems to be that you should be focusing on making your existing Transco system more, more efficient. And I don't think that's being anti-distribution, I just think that's being, being responsible. Particularly when part of your argument was, you know, for, for this, in your, in your comments, was the fact that there were record natural gas prices in New England this year. So it seems to me that, and while part of the article also talks about the lack of infrastructure in New England, that probably won't be coming online until 2018, it seems to me that you have an opportunity here to sort of kill two birds with one stone. You could upgrade your existing infrastructure. That moves the gas east, which in theory, once there's more ability to do distribution in New England, that you would then be able to take full advantage of that. And that would be preferable because you could deal with two business concerns rather than focusing on creating a greenfield pipeline through an area that historically hasn't had pipelines run through it. So I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to, to expect you to consider because I think all those arguments speak for themselves. So I will, I will be good at that.
The logic of having to make your, down through places like Southland Glen parallel, is there a reason you can't overlay with the power lines down through there? Is that?
Are you being in the exact same right-of-way?
Same right-of-way.
Rarely would we ever be in the exact same right-of-way as a power line. We would not cite, we just wouldn't cite the pipeline underneath power lines. They would be adjacent to, and that is what basically our first look through the Glen was, is citing our particular right-of-way adjacent to, not, so co-located has very different definitions, both in FERC and the public's mind. Co-location, most people think it is within that existing right-of-way. But co-location from FERC's standpoint means as close to or adjacent to those existing corridors. So that was our first look through the Glen, was to stay close to, as close as we could to the existing corridor.
But you, you could have a narrow strip of trees between your right-of-way and a power line right-of-way theoretically?
Robert, why don't you take that from FERC's guidance on what they were giving you?
My experience has been on our system anyway, where we are co-located with an existing power line, that our pipeline is already at the edge of the right-of-way. So it would be the power line and then our pipeline and then the, the trees, without a strip of trees in between. Mario, you want to correct me if I'm wrong? That's been my experience.
Typically, we would, we would like to keep a clear area between our pipeline and power lines.
Six hundred feet. And Cindy, you mentioned June ninth, you thought would be a meeting?
The week of June ninth.
The week of June ninth. Would that be the only public meeting in Lancaster County that you?
That's all we planned at this point in time, is typically what we would do, we try to make, make our open houses as evenly spaced across any project area where people do not have to drive more than twenty-five minutes or twenty-five miles to attend any meeting. We will hold ten open houses, they can go to any of them. It's just that the one that's going to be closest to them, obviously, is going to be in Lancaster. But certainly, they're open to the public, and if they can't make it that night, they could come to, and, you know, probably Lebanon would be the next closest one for folks to go to.
So week of June ninth?
But, but just so, just to clarify, because there's ten counties, it takes us a while to get through, so there's really three weeks set, set aside. The week would be May nineteenth. That's going to be on the mighty line system, those particular parts of the project, June second and June ninth. We'll miss the Memorial Day week because most people are traveling and holiday.
And then just one construction question, and I ask Mario, does the, does the digging pipeline, is that you or is that subcontract that you have? Would you come into an area and put out a bid, or that you use all the time for different areas?
On a new pipeline?
On a new pipeline?
Yeah, we would contract with one of the pipeline contractors that we typically use. I assume you mentioned, you know, they're specialized contractors that do only pipeline work and not a general contractor that, you know, does pipeline work on the site. Specific pipeline contractor. And it would go out for bid. Typically have three to five contractors that we would bid to. And we would negotiate a contract with the bidder. The contractor based on not only price, but on other things that are important to us, I mean, scheduling, et cetera.
The open houses you're talking about, is that different from, my understanding, FERC also establishes public meetings? Is that, those are different?
Very different. So the open houses are in a room like this, we have table talk, displays, talking about all aspects of the project, ranging from construction, operations, safety, land, environmental engineering. And then the landowners are allowed to come, we have big, long tables like this, that we have very detailed maps, that people can come and look at that sort of, not just their property, but basically so that they can understand sort of what the whole general area is. So we'll have those county maps out. When FERC does their scoping meetings, like I said, they're very formal, they're only for people to put comments on the record, not to get answers either from FERC or the company. So the time to really have a good Q and A dialogue with the company is at the open houses. It doesn't mean, so, and let's also say that, you know, East Donegal or some of the municipalities might ask us back to come to a meeting like this that they have in their particular township. We will do those on request. We're not required to do them, but we will if people ask us to do it. We typically like to do them after the open houses because we gain a lot of information from their constituents at the open houses. We make a lot of changes based on what we hear at the open houses. So typically, we like to, because we are so early in the process, people really want very detailed information before we really even had a chance to get detailed information. So it's a kind of a hard thing. People want answers, but then they also want to make sure that they, we haven't made all the decisions and they have the input. So the input comes during the open houses, and we take that information, we take it back. We can't always grant every request, but we certainly can kind of take a look at things, go back to our engineers, and see what kinds of flexibility, what we can have in certain areas. So that's the time to do it at the FERC scoping meetings. We don't determine those meetings. I can tell you, generally speaking, based on history and based on the attendance at the open houses, they will certainly hold FERC scoping meetings in areas, more populated areas. I anticipate both in Lancaster and Lebanon County, they probably would. I anticipate both in Lancaster and Lebanon County, they probably would do scoping meetings in some of the less populated area, I don't know that they would, it will depend on what they hear at the open houses. Rarely do they have as many scoping meetings as we have open houses. They try to generally space them out further than we do, and maybe they'll hold, in 10 counties, they might hold five or six, I really don't know. They will be attending our open houses, certainly we encourage all of you to attend, and you can ask those questions directly to them because they will be there. One of the other things that we mentioned with, or talked to the Conservancy about today, it's also a good time, when FERC is going to be in the area, they will be sort of driving, and they can't get on the lands that we don't have access to obviously, but they do like to kind of take a look at the route when they're here during the open houses. So they rent cars and kind of, we have our environmental folks kind of travel with them to help them see any environmentally sensitive areas. One of the things that we mentioned was that the Conservancy might invite them to come into the Glen to take a look at, and again, that would be a great opportunity for FERC to understand sort of their guidance, which is staying close to utility corridors, but when that utility corridor happens in a very environmentally sensitive area, then what would be their guidance at that point in time, and how would they go about doing it? And the best way to do it is for them to actually come and see both Shakespearean, Tuck One Glen, and any other areas. So we've encouraged the Conservancy to work with them and invite them to come and see during the time of the open houses.
Okay. We'll open it up now to public comment, and remember to be respectful of the time and state your name and municipality.
My name is Charles Lane, I live in Lancaster Township. I have to say, friends, wow. This has been a very enlightening experience for me and probably for all the rest of you. I think that we have to admire the tenacity and the capability of the people who've just been making presentations from Williams. We've been, it has been mentioned that there are alternatives to running a greenfield pipeline down through Lancaster County. I believe that Commissioner Layman has mentioned, there are east-west pipelines to the north of us, there are east-west pipelines to the south of us, and you mentioned a station for odorizing the gas in Fraser. Fraser is east of our county, it's either in Berks or in Westchester, Chester County. Here we have routes that are available, and it seems to me that this is definitely something that should be considered. The big problem that I see is money. There's a huge amount of money involved here. Look at all the people who have come to talk to us, these people are well-paid, it's costing millions, tons of money to do this. They have to deal with the government, tons of money to do that. What do we do about all this? The gas is coming out of the shale, in a few years, that gas is going to be depleted. Then what do the, what purpose will these pipelines serve? Then it seems to me we are not looking into the far distant need for energy in this country. It's a philosophical, perhaps, and an ethical and a technical question, and I'm not going to try and burden you with my ideas about it, but if you, I'm asking that this whole process be reasonable and responsible and take into consideration the fact that Lancaster County is a unique place, and we are unique because of some of the things we have, and some of the things we have are going to be affected by this pipeline, and therefore we need to stand up and make our voices heard. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, thanks for holding these meetings. It's a good opportunity to learn more and ask some questions. My name is John McGrann, I am born in Lancaster County, have lived here my whole life, my wife and I live here with our kids, and I'm on the board of the Lancaster County Conservancy. The Conservancy holds our county's limited forest lands for the public. Lancaster County, as you probably know, is about 23% residential, about 7% commercial industrial, about 55% farmland, and less than 15% forested land. Lancaster County continues to be one of the nation's 40 most polluted areas in smog and soot, according to the American Luminous Association, and this is in part due to our lack of forests. Our very limited forests are needed to clean the air in our county. And they're not our forests, they're the public's forests, they are open to the public from dawn to dusk every day of the year, and the, our forests are de-restricted for public use. While we don't know the specific details of the current route, you know, it's easy to conclude that many of the lands that are targeted for the proposed route were protected for the public through decades of local, state, national planning and investment. Over $6 million in state and county money, along with foundation and public donations, went into acquiring some of these lands, Shank's Ferry, Tuck One Glen, State Harbor, Kelly's Run. Other millions have been spent to manage, enhance, and protect the river corridor, known as the Susquehanna Riverlands, which is a Pennsylvania Department of Conservation Natural Resources, Conservation Landscape. Planning, acquisitions, marketing, economic development is all tied to these preserves. Management of the lands that are in this proposed pipeline route have been ongoing for decades. The partners are throughout our community, government officials, federal and state agencies, local government, nonprofits, corporate citizens, and private citizens. The county planning has specifically identified these lands of preservation efforts. In December of 2012, FERC handed down a precedent-setting decision permitting the removal of 1,260 acres from PPNL's product boundary for transfer to Lancaster County Conservancy, because, as they stated in their decision, "We believe that allowing the proposed lands to be removed from the project boundary and transferred to Conservancy to be managed under the conservation initiative is in the public interest and therefore should be approved." The same lands that were discussed in that decision appear to be along the designated pipeline route. So let me say that one more time. A little bit more than a year ago, a portion of the land that Williams identified was designated by FERC as land to be managed and preserved by Lancaster County Conservancy. We need your help to preserve the limited amount of forest land that remains in Lancaster County. These lands have been preserved and protected with contributed funds from throughout Lancaster County and the state of Pennsylvania with significant public taxpayer dollars. The investment to preserve these lands should not be undone in pursuit of the shortest, most convenient, and least expensive route for a pipeline that will have no long-term benefits for the residents of Lancaster County. We're here to respect the efforts of government protecting these forests, we hope that you're willing to work with us, we challenge you to direct the county planning commission's staff to map alternate routes so that we can identify the best outcome with least impact on Lancaster County. Thank you very much.
My name is Sherry Wolf, I live in Cornwall, and I'd like to say, I was born and raised in Lancaster County, I raised my own children here. I've hiked these trails my entire life, I now live in a very heavily wooded area in Cornwall. You're also in my county trying to take away our land, and I have to say, I will not stand by and watch you harm the land and the wildlife that I love. The only benefit to this project will be to the bank account of Williams. It's not worth endangering our community, and I just would like to say, I want you to leave. With your track record of accidents, we do not believe any of the lies that your PR team has been given, and I think I speak for a lot of people, I want you to take your dirty pipeline, your greedy intentions, and I want you to leave our beautiful county.
Let's keep the adjectives, and let's keep it professional here, you can express your opinion, but let's not get too personal.
Thank you, Commissioners.
It is personal.
My name is Marian McKelvey-Hash, I am a fifth-generation farming family. McKelvey-Lane is right next to that pink line. Now, I wasn't going to say nothing else, but I had a professor named Charles, Sean Berger, who couldn't be here today, and I want to read something about Martin Fall. He's a professor, an emeritus of earth science at Millersville University, where he taught courses in geology and geophysics for 30 years before retiring in 2003. Since retirement, he's maintained an active interest in seismology, and especially earthquakes in the eastern United States. He's a director of the eastern section of the Seismological Society of America, and author of the educational booklet, Earthquake Hazard in Pennsylvania, published in 2003 by the Pennsylvania Geological Survey. In 1995, he undertook a study under contract from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency on Earthquake Vulnerability of Pennsylvania, and he was asked to comment on the potential for a large earthquake in southern Lancaster County. Lancaster and Berks County are among the most seismically active ones in Pennsylvania. They were designated the Lancaster Seismic Zone in 1987 by seismologist John R. Brewster and Leonardo Seber at Columbia University. On April 22nd, 1984, southern Lancaster County was the site of a magnitude 4.1 earthquake, the third largest known to have occurred in Pennsylvania. Since then, numerous smaller earthquakes have occurred in that area. While none of these seismic events were large enough to cause significant damage, the possibility of larger and more damaging earthquakes in that area cannot be ruled out. In 2011, a magnitude 5.8 earthquake occurred in Louisa County, Virginia, an area with geology similar to that of southern Lancaster County. This earthquake caused ground shaking in the vicinity of the epicenter of 8 on the modified Mercalli scale used by seismologists to quantify earthquake effects. This intensity corresponds to moderate to heavy damage, even to well-built structures. In 1986, an earthquake with estimated 7.5 in magnitude, maximum intensity of 10, occurred near Charleston, South Carolina, and caused heavy damage in that city. My own analysis of the earthquake history of the mid-Atlantic region, New Jersey south through Virginia, suggests a probability of 1 in 200 each year for an earthquake of at least magnitude 6 in the mid-Atlantic states. The experience of Charleston shows that earthquakes of magnitude greater than 7 are possible in the east. While no one can predict where a large damaging earthquake will occur, the earthquake history of southern Lancaster County makes that an area of heightened concern with respect to seismic hazard. Charles, Sean Berger.
Thank you.
Greg Surback, Landisville, Pennsylvania, concerned citizen. Appomattox, Virginia, Susquehanna County, Pennsylvania, Windsor, New York, twice, Marshall County, West Virginia, Montrose, Pennsylvania, Branchburg, New Jersey, Geismar, Louisiana, Plymouth, Washington, Moundsville, West Virginia, Oboe, Wyoming, last week. All of these places have been the scene of explosions, fires, leaks, and calls that caused injury and death as a result of accidents at pipeline operations run by the Williams Partners and its subsidiaries. There are some that see this pipeline as inevitable and have resigned to fight only the proposed location of the pipeline in the River Hills. I respect and admire these efforts. However, this abysmal safety and compliance track record is evidence enough to make it clear to me that this pipeline should not come through Lancaster County. This pipeline is not welcome. The proposed pipeline would provide a connection between two existing pipelines, it is designed to make money for the Williams Partners and its shareholders. They have every right, even the responsibility, to seek that profit, but it will serve zero purpose to the citizens of Lancaster County. Our land is merely a convenient shortcut to maximum profit. This pipeline is not necessary. Last week, a York County judge ruled against another pipeline company, Sunoco, indicating that it was a common carrier, not a public utility corporation, and that it was not able to claim eminent domain. This pipeline is not warranted. Unwelcome, unnecessary, unwarranted. Commissioners Stuckey, Martin, Layman, I ask you, what will your legacy be? Will you go on record as having opposed this pipeline, this dangerous blight on our county? Or will you tell the Williams Partners that their pipeline is not wanted? I know you have little power in this regard, but will you use it to oppose their pointless pipeline? I ask you to put the people of Lancaster County first. Thank you.
I am Don Stark from Mount Joy Township, and one of my concerns is pipeline routing goes directly through my wooded area. It's the same area north of Elizabeth Town that hooks up to Mount Gretna, if you know that bridge of woodland there. So their proposal is to run the pipeline right through my woods, where I've lived there for 40 years, and I've paid taxes and accounting for 40 years, so I'm well represented in this area. So that's my concern. The other part of my concern is, natural gas, while certainly is a good energy, is not a renewable energy, and it is not the energy for the future. It's a short-term solution to the energy problem, but again, it is not renewable like solar or wind, so we know what the future of the pipeline is going to be. I did give all the Commissioners a copy of this, and I'm certainly not going to go through all this, but I would appreciate it if you would take a look at it. Again, Don Stark's my name, and I put on there a number of things. One is the history concerns and questions for Williams, which I'll go through quickly, expectations of the Commissioners, residents' desires, and environmental concerns that we have, as well as some other issues and some specifics on the survey that we've encountered, and also some social disruptions that we know are occurring up in the Marcellal Shale The, pray well, as we know, they've had a number of violations in the state of Pennsylvania, they've paid the most fines compared to other companies. We know about the situation in Louisiana that killed two and injured 114 people, so that's a concern. A friend of mine in the Williamsport area, and this recently happened within last year, had a pipeline go through his property, he has several hundred acres, and as opposed to going with the contract which indicated they were going to replace the topsoil, which we've heard all about, they did not replace the topsoil, okay, and they destroyed a lot of his crops, okay? And as a result of that, he had to, in effect, propose a suit against the pipeline company to get what he needed, and after proposing a suit, they decided to do what they had agreed to do in the contract.
It's time.
Okay? Pardon?
It's time, we're in it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
My name is Dr. Alan Peterson, I'm the Emeritus Director of Environmental and Community Medicine of Lancaster General Hospital. I would like you to be aware of the possible public health issues that might arise... I would like you to be aware of the possible public health issues that might arise if this project goes forward. First, in its annual 2013 State of the Year Report, the American Women's Association gave Lancaster an F for its ground-level ozone. The Lancaster area is considered 33rd worst in the nation for ozone levels. The removal of trees and the hundreds of trips of diesel construction vehicles will only worsen this air pollution. The approximate 50 miles of total added Lancaster County pipeline, including the Wildcat Point lines, with 125 feet of construction area, which traverses approximately 750 acres, with more than two-thirds of that being wooded. Because of these issues, an aggregation analysis of all associated equipment should be done in order to understand the cumulative air quality and the public health impacts. Without this, the gas companies can just nickel-and-dine air quality to death. And we also urge best and safest technologies, not just best available technologies, which may only include those technologies that are available for the price that the company wants to pay. Also request participation in the EPA Natural Gas Star Program to cut emissions, especially of ozone-forming methane. And the EPA says methane can be emitted as the result of fugitive emissions during transportation. Over 80% of natural gas is methane. Methane, however, is 21 times more potent than carbon dioxide. Volatile organic compounds can also be released. It can cause neurologic, developmental, brain, liver, kidney, and eye problems. PCBs can also be released. Fugitive emissions or leaks can cause symptoms of blurred vision, dizziness, skin irritation, nausea, vomiting, headaches, exhaustion, and asphyxiation. Transmission, storage, and distribution account for 53% of fugitive emissions. Mental health will also be affected. Fear factors include inconvenience, restrictions of land use, property value anxiety, unnatural loss of natural forest, earthquakes, and possible terrorism, and also increased well-water contamination. Anxiety, depression, loss of solitude from noise of construction, and numbers of access roads. Loss of recreation area and blasting occur. Fire and explosions are not uncommon, as has been mentioned. Williams has had two explosions in the last four weeks that have been reported. Obviously, I wish for Williams to spare all preserved natural areas. I'll say that again. I wish for Williams to spare all preserved natural areas.
It's time.
Finally, I have practiced medicine in southern Lancaster County for over 37 years, and overwhelmingly folks are enthusiastic. As stated in Pennsylvania Constitution, Section 27, the people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to preserve the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations yet to come. As trustee of these resources, the Commonwealth shall conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all the people.[810.12][810.12](applause)
I'm, it's almost afternoon. Afternoon. I'm Mark Platts, a resident of Annheim Township in Lancaster County. I'm also president of the Susquehanna Gateway Heritage Area, one of the board directors. As you know, the Susquehanna Gateway Heritage Area is a nonprofit organization serving both Lancaster and York Counties with a special focus on the Susquehanna River Corridor. We work with partners to preserve, protect, and share the cultural and natural heritage of the river in order to bring economic development to our region through community revitalization and heritage and outdoor touristities. Our long-term vision is to establish the River Corridor through Lancaster, York Counties as a sustainable, world-class destination for heritage travelers and outdoor recreation, creating new jobs and business opportunities for local communities. And for over 10 years, we've worked closely with a wide range of local, state, and national partners to conserve land along the river, to enhance park and trail facilities. You're familiar with those efforts. This collaboration has resulted in over $25 million being invested in the river-focused tourism infrastructure over the past decade or so. And there are more great projects coming in the pipeline, not this one. Figure Hilton Street. Make benefits and showcase heritage and outdoor recreation attraction. The pipeline project is currently proposed will go through or close to many of the very places escaped in the waters that run through it. We believe that Williams Partners should rethink and redesign their pipeline proposal to avoid the River Corridor, as well as all other environmentally sensitive areas in Lancaster County. The pipeline route should stay away from the parks, preserves, historic sites, and natural areas that so many have strived so hard to preserve, protect, and share for the economic well-being of our region and our state. So our question for Williams is, will you commit to all the Lancasterians that are here today and watching online that you will not route your pipeline through any of the publicly-preserved lands and parks and preserves and historic sites that we have worked so long to preserve?[958.07][958.07](applause)
Good mor, good afternoon. My name is Mary Glazier, and I'm a resident of Manor Township. First of all, I want to say I concur with all the comments and concerns that have been expressed thus far. They're extremely articulate, and we are blessed to have such wonderful advocates among the citizenry, and willing to take up their time to come here and address them. Second, I want to encourage the county commissioners to take a role that advocates on behalf of the public. There are a lot of concerns that have been raised here, and we really are looking to you to be with us as we struggle to deal with this particular threat. And then the third thing that I wanted to mention is just a concern that I have as a Manor Township resident with the protection of cultural resources. And a question that I don't necessarily want to take time to have them answer today, but ask again maybe the commissioners to pursue with them. We have important cultural resources in Manor Township, including the Logan, the site of the Logan Trading Post, which was the place where in 1721, the Covenant Chain Indian Treaty was signed. And I am very concerned to know how is Manor Township in particular going to be protected from having the Native American archaeological remains that are there preserved and protected? And how are we going to protect the history and the cultural resources of that area? I know that there is a process, but I want to make sure that it is being, it is going to be followed to the letter, and that if there is disruption, that it is minimized and mitigated. And of course, my preference would be that the Manor Township areas with these important cultural resources not be disturbed at all. But I challenge you to inquire further into what is present in Manor Township, and maybe to use that as a basis for reconsideration of your decision to come through that township and through Lancaster County at all. There are, and I encourage you to find them. Thank you.[1099.23][1099.23](applause)
Commissioners and representatives, I want to spend my three minutes today getting rather personally with you. My name is Mark Clatterbuck of Tuckahoe and Glen in southern Lancaster County. I'm a resident and co-founder of the Williams Proposed Path and co-founder, with my wife Melinda Harnish, of the Facebook community Soul, Save Our Unspoiled Land. Perry Liu, who is with us today, project manager for the Central Penn Line, wrote in Sunday's Lancaster paper, quote, "My job is to help figure out the best place to site the pipeline in a way that minimizes impacts on people and the environment. Yes, we think we have a pretty good preliminary route," end of quote. For the record, Perry, I don't think you have a pretty good preliminary route. You proposed to rip the ditch through 35 miles of Lancaster celebrated farmland, River Hills, nature preserves, scenic waterways, then permanently flood that ditch with toxic gas bursting against high-pressure pipelines operated by a company with a spectacular record of environmental and safety violations. In what way can you honestly call this a pretty good route for anyone in this room except Williams Partners? Given the certainty of lower property values, and that is a certainty, devastation of our forests, risks to our water, violation of our private property, all in light of the fact that this unwanted pipeline will bring zero natural gas to Lancaster County residents, some of which even destined for foreign ports, you'll forgive us if we laugh out loud when you call this a pretty good route.
I need to, I need to interject. Please direct your comments to the board. I mean, don't direct them personally to Williams. I don't think that's appropriate. Certainly, you can say the same thing you're saying, but please, please say to the board. I think that's the proper decorum for this, if you would please.
All right, there's a gathering storm of families here in Lancaster County whose lives have been ended by news of this project. We're daily losing sleep, skipping meals, pulling our kids from school to organize local youth, in some cases jeopardizing our very jobs, all to spend every waking hour scrambling to derail this project as currently proposed. To be clear, we're not looking to be paid off adequately for the use of our land. We're looking to keep you off our land at any price.[1251.12][1251.12](applause) We in the River Hills of Lancaster County don't see this pipeline as merely an inconvenience to be overcome by appropriate compensation. We regard this pipeline as nothing less than an assault on our way of life and on the things we hold most dear. This is not hyperbole. We regard this pipeline as something a lot like sacrilege, and it is not inevitable, no matter how many times Williams talking points insist it is. Last week at a town hall meeting in our very rural community of Mardi Township, nearly 300 people turned out to talk about this gas line. I don't think that's ever happened in Mardi Township in its history, probably. 300 people at one place and one time. All evening long, people kept coming to the mic, shaking their heads and saying, "Is Williams crazy? They want to put the pipeline through the River Hills, through Lancaster County conservancy forests, through preserved farmlands? Farmlands is nothing sacred?" Republicans, Democrats, farmers, sportsmen, landowners, bird watchers, college students, elders. Two hours later at that meeting, and not a single word had been spoken in support of this project. Every voice raised that evening expressed unequivocal opposition. Commissioners, on behalf of the thousands in this county who are fighting with genuine desperation and personal sacrifice to keep this pipeline out of Lancaster County and out of our River Hills, including the 9,300 people who have signed a petition in opposition to this project in the last two weeks alone, I beg you not to turn a deaf ear to our voices. Oppose this pipeline through Lancaster County if anything's sacred anymore.[1353.01][1353.01](applause)
Barry L. Russell, Lancaster City, concerned human. Good afternoon, Chairman Stuckey, Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Lehman, Williams Energy Representatives, concerned citizens. My comments this morning are modified partly from articles written by John Upton, a writer, environmentalist, and someone willing to speak up and speak out, excuse me, against the Williams Company, just like so many of the voices you hear today. Thank you for the opportunity to add mine. Headline: The company's gas company, gas plants just keep on exploding. Perhaps executives at the Williams Energy Company have fiery personalities, or maybe they just don't care about safety or about their workers or neighbors. A huge explosion at one of the company's gas processing plants in southern Wyoming just last Wednesday afternoon triggered the evacuation of all residents of the small nearby town of Opel. April 24, 2014, Wyoming Star Tribune. The plant, which is connected to six pipelines that help feed fracked natural gas to customers throughout the American West, burned throughout Wednesday night and into Thursday when neighbors were finally allowed to return to their homes. As extraordinary as the fortunately injury-free accident sounds, something similar happened just four weeks ago at a Williams gas processing plant near the Washington/Oregon border. That explosion injured five workers and led to the evacuation of over 400 residents. April 1, 2014, Associated Press, Accidents, Natural Gas. Closer to home. A year ago, workers were injured when one of the company's natural gas facilities blew up in Blanchburg, New Jersey, about two hours from here. May 1, 2013, CentralJersey.com. Headline: This company's pipelines have also blown up. Monday, April 7, 2014, neighbors in Marshall County, West Virginia, say they're on edge after a natural gas pipeline ruptured Saturday morning. Frank Elsas Jr. said, "It looked like a huge ball of flames. I could feel the heat from that flame. It was 40 to 50 feet long, and it was burning the top of the trees." WTOV Channel 9 News. Last year, a leak of 241 barrels of fluid from a Williams natural gas processing plant in Colorado contaminated a creek with carcinogenic benzene. At least nothing blew up that time. May 2013, the grist got come. Williams is committed to maintaining the highest standards of safety, the company claims on the homepage of its website. Frankly, I'd hate to see what lower standards look like. We can say no to this project. It's bad for people. It's bad for the environment. It's bad for our future.
It's time.
Our hands are not tied because the power has always been with living folk, the people, not profit-driven, community-damaging, dead corporations. Thank you for your time.[1557.12][1557.12](applause)
My name is Joanne Duvois-Musselman, and I'm here as a member of Lancaster County's Unitarian Universal Green Sanctuary Committee, who have taken a stand against fracking as a social justice as well as a steward, stewardship issue, and Pennsylvanians against fracking to definitely oppose the proposed pipeline. It is important to remember that every Pennsylvanian has a constitutional right to save drinking water and clean air, which is being threatened by the many dangers of fracking and gas transportation. It is also important to remember that this year marks the 30th anniversary of Lancaster County establishing the first agricultural preserve board, and then Lancaster Farmland Trust. We as a county have made a top priority over the years in both funding and in philosophy to protect our farmlands, parks, and natural areas. Lancaster County is now going to be in a David and Goliath battle with the Texas and Oklahoma oil companies, who are coming in to exploit and possibly ruin not only our farmland, but our parks and natural areas such as Tuckahoe and Glen Natural Preserve, River Hills, and Fishing Creek. And let's not forget, Lancaster County and the Susquehanna River provide 60% of the headwaters to the Chesapeake Bay. And for Williams to say that there would be no threat or impact on waterways or wells is beyond unbelievable and is totally false. This is not just a partisan or political issue, I'd like to remind all of you. This is also a moral and religious issue. This land does not belong to any of us. We are just stewards of the land and our environment, and this is to be handed down to our children and our generations to come. We have been given a natural paradise, and the question is, are we now Lancaster County residents and citizens brave and strong enough to protect it? I would also like to just add, I'd like to thank Commissioner Lehman for trying to get this venue to a larger capacity so more citizens could be here. I'd also like to very much thank our local newspaper, Lancaster Newspapers, particularly Ad Crable and the editorial staff, for bringing such a wonderfully important and critical issue before the public. And I'd also like to note that a large contingent of Lampeter Strasburg High School students were here, one of the best high schools in the country. It's great to see our kids involved in this issue as well. Thank you.[1731.33][1731.33](applause)
Hi, my name is Matt Johnson. I'm a city resident formerly of Pequay and Mardi Township, so I know a little bit about Tuckahoe and Glen. I admittedly came in with not-so-positive feelings about the idea of the pipeline, and I hope that throughout the proceedings, we would get some measure of reasonable idea of what the benefit would be for Lancaster County or any of the people affected. And throughout the entire presentation, I was kind of quite surprised that we didn't get anything that seems to even be remotely close to a benefit for the county. We're providing the opportunity to go right through our land without any of the benefit of the natural gas coming through. I find that argument about natural gas prices to be rather specious if we're thinking that we're going to be paying any less because of it. And I guess, I suppose that there is this sort of dangling of the hotel fees and the restaurants and so forth, but it seems to me that that, I mean, we know from experience in northern Pennsylvania where Marcella Shale is happening, that this is completely ridiculous. In fact, it's been such a... In fact, it's been such a strain on the public infrastructure there that they've had, they've had to call in new police, they haven't been able to handle the roads situation. So it seems rather ridiculous that we're getting absolutely nothing out of this. I was hoping that this could be a reasonable dialogue, and I think that everybody has, for the most part, respected that idea, but it seems completely unreasonable to support this at this juncture. It doesn't even pass the partially odorized smell test.
Thank you, Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name's Marcy Matal. I live in Lancaster City. I'm Concerned Citizen. I work for a company in Tennessee, and I have the opportunity to live anywhere in the United States, and I have chosen Lancaster County, just like my other Concerned neighbors and citizens here today. And though we have a voice, we are not the decision-makers. So all I'm asking today, for those of you who are the decision-makers, to please make the best decision for Lancaster County and our residents. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'm Teria Ashelman, and my mother's maiden name was Gamber, and it goes back to Gelb Mocker. Our family is, both my husbands and mine, are about 400 years here in the county. Anyway, we, the members of the Citizens Stewardship Alliance, speak for the concerns of many Lancaster County residents regarding the Central Penn gas pipeline. We oppose approvals being sought for the project by Williams Partners. We remind our Commissioners that much conserved land is near or in the path of this proposed pipeline, land that has been deliberately set aside by the will and effort of the citizens of this county, land that was needed to be preserved, and land that was purchased by organizations such as the Lancaster County Conservancy and the Lancaster Farmland Trust to ensure future protection. We want our Lancaster County Commissioners to know that we support you when you act as good stewards. Continue honoring commitments made to care for these valued lands. The preservation of pristine and restored areas such as Tukwong Glen, Shank's Ferry, House Rock, and Fishing Creek should be enough to end consideration of the pipeline, but it tends to scales even further when it's so wasteful to build an unneeded line with no lasting benefit to the county. There's already an existing Transco pipeline in place that can move the gas south if that's really the energy policy the Williams interests are seeking to promote. Gas pipelines are not power lines. When there is human error, and there will always be human error, high-pressure pipelines and the compressor stations can explode with dire results. In the years through 2010 and 2014, there have been over 140 such accidents across the country. Lancaster County has not been spared its consequences. Additionally, gas lines of any size and pressure can weaken, leak, rupture, and explode, adding to the potential for serious harm to life and property. Besides the potential for explosion, there are other quality-of-life issues. Some impact residents most severely. All further diminish the joy of those seeking helpful outdoor recreation. Loud noises ends the solace, we know, in places where peace once prevailed. Noise levels are regulated not to exceed a day-night average of 55 decibels whether our schools, hospitals, or residences, but there's no mention of limiting noise pollution in areas of protected conservation lands. Also, we must consider vibration pollution. From a FERC publication, such low-frequency noise was likened to vibrations when a speaker causes the floor to shake, or a helicopter flying overhead causes windows to rattle. No one would want to live as a neighbor to this noise. It will destroy the tranquility of nature in our conserved areas and limit the presence of native wildlife. Lastly, air quality may be worsened by emissions when natural gas escapes or is vented and from engines used to turn the powerful turbine compressors. I'll skip. In summary, the use of concerned land to lessen costs for private industry will prove too costly for the citizens of Lancaster County now or in our children's future. When human errors occur, and they will occur, the resulting damage can be catastrophic. The pipeline is not needed. The Transco pipeline already transports gas to the south. This proposed Central Penn pipeline would never benefit Lancaster County and waste sufficient to compensate for the disruption and pollution during construction, plus the added hazards of escaping emissions, intense noise, and vibrations emitted from the compressor stations. Thank you so very much.
My name is Steve Murray. I'm a city resident. And I'd like a little bit of clarification before I begin, if I could, please. Mr. Chairman, can we have a show of hands? I know these are all Williams employees here at the table. How many more Williams employees do we have over here? Can we have a show of hands? Who's employed by Williams? How many more is that? Another six? So we've got a dozen people here. I've been an employer for most of my life, and, for example, when I walk into the Apple Computer Store and I see 20 or 30 people that were there to wait on people, my immediate thought is, what is the payroll for this? We're looking at probably over a million dollars here, ladies and gentlemen. These people are professionals. They know what they're doing. They're here to serve their employer. There's nothing wrong with that, but there's something really wrong with this picture. They're such great professionals at selling this stuff to communities. "Hey, I've got a great idea. Let's call it the Atlantic Sunrise." Isn't that cute? It's an ugly, smelly pipeline, is what it is. There's no sunrise in anything associated with this project. There's only sunset to associate with this. One thing that we did not get clarification from, from the lady in her testimony, is she said that this was going to be a transmission pipeline, and in questioning from the Commissioners about possible tapping into it for the benefit of the county, she said it was possible. Well, I mean, it's possible, but it's not in all likelihood probable. I'd like to get a couple of answers to questions. If I can't address them directly to these people, maybe the Commissioners could. Is this gas for export? Is that the main intent regarding this pipeline, number one? And number two, I know that you've had numerous accidents that have been cited by previous speakers here, but my second question is this. Could you all just pick out two of the explosions that are taking place in your pipelines and tell us what happened and why it happened, especially in light of your testimony of all of the safety issues that you folks supposedly addressed with us and how you monitor everything? I'd like, I'd like answers to those two questions, please. Thank you so much.
We have some time left. Williams has committed to getting answers to questions that we may not be able to answer right now, so if you noted those, we can guess.
Our names are Kara.
Kara Longaker-Hurst.
Kevin Hurst, and we are residents in the Constance Township area. We are very concerned about this pipeline coming through. We have a lot of concerns about this pipeline coming through. We aren't close enough to get any kind of cash for our land, but we are close enough probably to be within the reach of a fireball from, from a 42-inch diameter pipe. That's pressurized my understanding to 1,200 PSI, between 1,200 and 1,500 PSI. If you, if that's correct, my wife and I are very concerned about that and for the lives of our children. We appreciate whatever safety measures you put in, but unfortunately, we can't trust it, given the record. And that's hard. We're going into a land that's sensitive due to, as was mentioned earlier, to potential for earthquakes, and if you go to the DCNR Act, there's seismic activity recorded there for the state of Pennsylvania, and you're running it right through the throat of highly volatile, potentially volatile, area. Not to mention that you're next to waterways that are filling into the Susquehanna River. If this leaks and gets out into the river, you have no place, no, it's immediately into that stem of the Chesapeake Bay, and the cleanup is incredible. You're not only jeopardizing our lives, but you're also jeopardizing people way down the line with this, and any kind of explosion that takes place. Please, please, consider those who are residents there.
There's a, yeah, there's a lot of children living along this pipeline. You may think it's a rural area, oh, there's not, there's a lot of children, you know, a lot of children in our area that live right next to where this is going. So we're very, very, very concerned. And then, I was going to read, I realized on the car right here, I couldn't read all of these explosions in three minutes. So it looks like a safe, obviously, and it's going to be environmentally catastrophic. We walked to Shank's Ferry from our house, our kids walked down there, so many people walked down there. People come from all over to photograph the gems, the wild orchid down there, some beautiful flowers. If you go down now, it's a blanket of bluebells. You're going to decimate that area. It's just wrong.
My name is Tim Space. I live in Mardi Township, and I heard you admonish gently Mark earlier for not addressing these folks directly. It's very difficult because they are looking right at me. Perhaps if they would just keep their heads down, as they should. I'm going to interject. These folks are here to do a job. I understand that, but you cannot attack them personally and aggrieve them. Now, hold on, I'm speaking now. We have had a rule here where we treat everybody with respect. I completely understand that this is an emotionally charged issue, but there are just some lines you don't cross in a meeting that I can. So I ask you once again, I'm asking the board, you can be emotional, you can be impassioned, but you should not be personally pointed at them. And I will attempt to not do that, but it is also very difficult when they're sitting right here to not address them directly. You must understand that. So my condolences on their most recent explosion. I can only imagine, it's very embarrassing for anyone to sit here with that record. And I don't think anyone's actually said it, but I do believe it's the worst. We talked about how bad their record is, but I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, because I am kind of new to this, and I will admit that sometimes I don't get all the facts right, but it's not a bad record. It is by far, bar none, the worst safety record. Now, I'm not going to say anything new, but I do feel as though it bears repeating because obviously they don't get it. I would also like to point out that no one yet has stood up at this lectern and spoken out in favor of this pipeline. So I would like for the Commissioners to take note of that, because that's why we elected our public elected officials, to represent us. So us has spoken, so we act accordingly. The bottom line is, I work for a small company, under 100 employees. When we hit the tough financial times a couple of years ago, we all took a hit. We all gave 10% of our salary to help the company stay afloat and get through the tough times, and we're through that now, and we're doing much better. So it strikes me that this whole proposal, when they have an existing pipeline, that they can either upgrade the size of the pipe, or if they're going to exercise eminent domain anyway over Lancaster County residents, exercise it along the route that's already there where the people already lived with the dangers, the hazards, the inconvenience of a pipeline. Widen that pipeline. This one we had mentioned likening it to a four-lane highway. You've already got a highway, there's dangerous traffic on it. Make it a five-lane highway, but please, stay out of Lancaster County, because the only thing this does is increase their company's bottom line. If they need all 10% pay cut like we did with one company when we hit hard times, then that's what they need to do. They need to use the existing Transco line to stay out of our county.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Meehan. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Lancaster Group of the Sierra Club and the Pennsylvania Chapter of the Sierra Club in opposition to the proposed Williams Central Penn Pipeline. In Pennsylvania alone, the Sierra Club has approximately 25,000 people, members, and roughly 1,200 members in Lancaster County, who will be directly affected by the proposed pipeline. In addition to those whose daily lives will be directly impacted by the project, our Pennsylvania members share the natural resources that will be affected. We drink the water, breathe the air, and enjoy the recreational value of these beautiful lands. Williams is proposing to construct the 35-mile Central Penn Pipeline in Lancaster County as part of the Atlantic Sunrise Project. Construction of this project will disturb thousands of acres of land, including permanent alteration to the county's already limited forests and forest lands, and severe high-quality exceptional value waterways. This means that we can lose permanently a significant portion of the natural resources that help to maintain human and environmental health throughout the region, and resulting in local and downstream impacts. Project will also, will cross through several of our treasured natural preserves, permanently compromising the character and integrity of lands such as Tukwong Glen, Shank's Ferry, Kelly's Run. Loss of critical habitat could also affect the already threatened and endangered species in the area, including Indiana bat, and special protection orders in Pennsylvania. It is essential that we prevent pipeline development from taking away these valuable resources that are part of our cultural heritage and essential to maintaining human and environmental health for ourselves, our children, and our future. Thank you for your opportunity to comment, and we appreciate your thoughtful consideration of this proposal.
Stephen Engel, Moazwell, PA. I'm also with the Sierra Club here of Lancaster. I'm a conservation chairman. Just kind of lying low for a while, but I felt like I needed to come out of retirement and address this issue straight on. I'm going to talk about this from a couple of different angles. One of the things I heard was, and this is quote, your own quotes, "An environmentally insensitive area." That's where the proposed pipeline would go. I don't know. That really concerns me. I think it concerns a lot of people in this room. I'm from Colorado, I spent a lot of time there, and coming here to Lancaster County, I value those treasured resources down there. To put a pipeline in an environmentally sensitive area makes zero sense to me. What also makes zero sense to me is there's no economic benefit. As a stakeholder of this project, what do I have to gain? Nothing. But yet, doing a quick cost-benefit analysis, my expenses are tremendous. Is this something I would undertake as a business stakeholder? No, of course not. You two Commissioners are stakeholders. What is our benefit to gain? But yet, if you answer none, and then you mount and add up the costs, I think you come to an easy decision. But also, in my professional life, I'm a certified safety professional. Matter of fact, I'm going down to Norfolk, Virginia after this to reevaluate a program, a company's safety and health record, their program, their compliance, to see if somebody out firm wants to do business with. Do I want to do business with Williams, given their record of safety performance? No. So on many levels, I have a lot of concerns, professionally, from a cost-benefit standpoint, and certainly ecologically. I hope you would consider, seriously, the interests of us, these people, the stakeholders. Thank you.
I came out of my house this morning to get chocolate milk and deliver a plate that I needed to return. I didn't know anything about this. I just wound up here.
Where do you live?
I'm Ronald Boach. I'm living over here on 13 East Bonnup for the rest of the nights. And anyway, I observed this and I feel that I am unbiased here because, you know, I've read something about this on the internet and it was like, you know, I really don't know. Now, coming here, I mean, really, what this all comes down to, as I see it, is vehicles of transportation. You know, we're talking pipeline here. And they want to move, these guys here, they are company, I specialize, I guess, in pipelines and contractors. They have contractors that deal in pipelines, so they got mouths to feed, you know what I mean, for their growing company with all these different little fingers that go along with putting in a pipeline, just like, hey, an electric line, same thing, you've got a bunch of employees to feed. They got their job. They're not bad guys. They're just doing a job. People, they definitely have good rights here, you know, as far as their land being taken and all that stuff. But the energy doesn't have to be moved out of this state through a pipeline in order to be used. It can be used on the spot. And I do believe that taking this resource out of land does weaken the structure. I worry about the earthquakes a little bit, too, the instability, land will be, what do you call them, sinkholes and stuff. But anyway, transportation is what I'm good at. And there are other vehicles of transportation.
Very well today. I recommend that you research and read about compression stations and the fairly large impact they have on people in their vicinity. I'd like to know if there are any compression stations planned for this pipeline here in Lancaster County? And if not currently, would you categorically state that you would never build compression stations here in Lancaster County? And if you would build them now or later, would citing them be governed by local statutes of safety, zoning laws? Or would you put them where you pleased? And finally, concerning compression stations, would any of you look next door to one? Could we actually get answers to my substantive question?
Can we do it quick?
Yes. There are no compression stations planned for, none planned for Lancaster County. The company would never make a promise that we would never build one here. There's just no way of knowing what customer request would come in the future, so we cannot predict the future about that. Would we ever live near a compressor station? I grew up on a compressor station. My father worked for a gas pipeline company and I lived in company housing on a station. And Mary can also...
And I lived in company housing for 10 years, based at this station. I grew up. And my kids grew up at the station. They played on the pipeline. We had no problem. My kids were both healthy boys.
The first descriptions that I've read about compression stations are pretty scary. And I would like to keep that in mind.
My name is Justice Howard. I'm a Millersville resident and I'm just a concerned citizen overall. And I have a single question. And my question is, per cubic foot of pipeline, what is the acceptable level of permeation of gas into the atmosphere? Because this is gas we're talking about. This isn't a liquid. I mean, things are not just solid. It permeates through the pipeline and through everything else. Are there any statistics, per cubic foot, how much gas does or does not permeate through?
There's no leakage in the pipeline. It's a steel pipeline, but the gas is contained, but there's absolutely no leakage through the pipeline.
Bruce, very quickly, please. Very quickly. Very quickly. Bruce Clark again.
No, there may not be any leakage through the pipeline itself, but you've got a lot of valves and a lot of seals on them. And those sealed after a while.
I just want to emphasize that I can't speak enough, and I think loud and clearly, I mean, there's an area of this county that's very special to this county and it's one that we can't replicate in other areas of our county that we really want to make sure is not disturbed. And so going back to my original question, what we can possibly devise to see what that alternative would look like and what kind of impacts that might have as opposed to going through those areas. I very much say, with respect to the people who don't want to see the pipeline at all, I'm sure everyone in this room can say, we definitely don't want to see it going through that area if there's an alternative we as a community would like to see it. But I do appreciate your time. This is why we opened up this meeting to the public, though the board isn't, we don't issue permits from this fashion. We don't make a decision as it goes, but to be able to advocate for more information, be able to put out there and show that we do care and let our folks know what, how they can get involved in this process. I just finally would like to say is we will do our best as soon as possible to get these things, the maps, getting scanned, the work of planning.
Can I offer, because things do change all the time, it may be better, because we have all of these maps on our site and we do update them regularly, it may be better to provide a link from your website to ours so that we don't have to constantly keep updating yours and you don't have to worry about that. If we'll just link to ours and we'll give you that link. It may be a better way.
Now, that's the process laid out.
Everything, everything. It doesn't have it, it doesn't look exactly like that. It does have the process there, it just doesn't look exactly like that particular block of the gas.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. Going to echo a little bit of what I said on the front end. And as you all know, I don't think it should go through the rural hills areas in Lancaster County. But I also, I also think that we really need to be mindful that if FERC really does approve this pipeline, that there are an array of impacts that are going to happen across Lancaster County and it's important for us to be mindful that those impacts, that affect us all and that we need to speak with more voice on those. As I stated earlier through my Q and A with the folks from Williams, and thank you for that, I do appreciate it. I do think that taking a look at existing infrastructure before creating a shortcut through our neighborhood is the preferred approach from my perspective, particularly given that, you know, part of...